I think they looked it, so I walked over there just now and see if I can.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's back. We're on. Service six thirty. It was pretty good. It was pretty good that game. Well, that was. I had a first. He's important. Yeah, we're. Oh, I mean. And you did. I do. You're pretty excited. We're in my. Yes. Well, I think it was a pattern from the past. It was like three, two days. It was a beauty. But that was a general hammer. Sure. So. Yeah, we wanted to have another day. We heard the big of a year. That we kind of. This is what you got. It's a. The. We enjoy. No. There's all. Don't be. So. I want to. If there was anything to.
Hello, hello. That's picking up.
Hello. All right. Yeah. Good.
Thirty. Six.
We've done for. I replied. Everyone.
I'm hoping she'll last. Plumber. Oh. I just decided to go low tech. And what I wanted to say something else. I read it off, but.
I was doing all the paper files and stuff. I'm. Saying.
Yes, son. It's. Son. Great pictures. And.
Yeah. I just keep it for like that a month and then I rotate out. Guess I need to go back and look at those. But I haven't.
You're gonna go back? Yeah. He's almost. His baby. Maybe that's. I'm. Then just. You're saying. Well, we're saying. So you're. Yes. It's all.
Yeah. So we can download. We can download the packet, which I do.
Still difficult to have. Give attention. Just like the website. Now, some of these around. For the website. There's better. Search. Not there.
Everything's a process, Rudy. Know this one?
And so. How are you?
Okay, how are you doing?
All right. Awesome.
Yeah.
Got to have my glasses. Clean.
How you doing?
They're twenty now. I I I read at nineteen. Man, we have excited people. I feel like. I love it.
Their lives. So make you do. That's why I'm.
Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Right, council, are we all ready here? Do you need a bit?
Ready?
Ready?
Yeah, I'm getting there.
Okay. Steph, are we ready to go? Sure. All right. Okay, so. Oh.
Barbara. Good, how are you?
Sorry, Barbara. I. All right, time is six P M. I'm calling order a regular meeting of the city council of the city from the Dallas, Texas for Tuesday, March seventh, twenty two, May three. And again, we're in our temporary chambers, so appreciate everything combination as we navigate to making sure that we have enough space for folks. But the good news is that progress is definitely being made over at the hall. Appreciate all the work that staff has been doing to coordinate the repairs. Um, we're going to start with our public comments. Council, there are twenty comments in in town hall, so you get a chance to read through those. The majority of them are about the rezoning item. That's later, there are a number of comments about the speed signs that is not in specific agenda item, but we will. We can ask questions to staff or staff reports since that's an in in work project and hopefully get an update that we can share with the residents. So that if there's any members of the book that wish to speak at this time that's. Are not going to be around for another item or want to speak to thousands of that's not on the agenda, please do so at this time.
Maybe speak before the due time.
Yes, you can. If you don't, you won't be able to be here for a night, or you just want to speak now, this is.
Good evening. So mayor and council members. Very convenient. Thank you for listening. What I'd like to talk to you guys about today is what we are actually discussing more in depth tomorrow. I have a few questions and comments. And I would call it's best just to come and share with you about the dark sky potential resolution that you all have been talking about. So first off, I think it's important. Well, I should say I'm running a high curly the ski. I think that's what I need to do. I'm pretty agnostic at this point in time about what dark sky resolution might mean for Sunset Valley. I feel like I need to have a mobiles. Way to get information to figure out what are the pros and cons that may have be a benefit for the city, but that also may work against us. I I don't know at this point in time enough, so my questions are intended to try to get some of that hopefully tomorrow, if not as we continue the conversation. So number one. What expert will represent the view that dark sky resolution will have a negative impact to the citizens and citizens of Sunset Valley? And by this, by me, are there individuals out there, are there fatalities in Texas that have tried dark sky resolution and found that it was still beneficial for their account? So this is not to try to create a bias on the negative, but to try to be retraining. What others have done that might actually inform us with some understanding of what they did and what they learned. Number two. For those who favor a such a solution, what are the elements of it? I think it's important to really nail down, is it street lights? Is this houses external lighting? Is it business lighting requirement? Is it dimming and turning off lights at a certain time, et cetera? We should have a clarity on how that resolution may directly impact us and change what we have today. I feel like I've had conversations with different folks and I have gotten different signals every time that I I have asked the question. And quite honestly, what the listeners that I had this information that I've got online. So I think it would be important to see what Sunset Valley is saying, this is what we want to achieve, and these are the specifics. Number three, being that we're surrounded by the city of Austin and that our skies are already have a great deal of light pollution coming from the big stadium. It isn't clear how at the macro level, there would be a measurable benefit to our skies. The stadium lights glare, for instance, is quite visible from my house. Further, we're not in a position to control any future lighting changes, either in stadium or around the perimeter of Sunset Valley because of the big neighbor that we have next to us. And that might further negate the possible benefits of a resolution. Fourth, a proposal that creates many restrictions and regulations on our business community may have a future impact on who would want to do business in Sunset Valley. Especially if they can move to a location a couple blocks away in the city of Austin where those restrictions are not there. This is why it's critical to understand from the get go what sort of orders that these measures are proposing in specific terms. And lastly, number five, new business areas are in the process of being developed. It's no secret that Rolling Oaks is going to be developed pretty soon. There are other developments in the works. Thanks for their further south from here. And they will be well lit and they will be inviting customers who will not shop in places that are too dark and with poor visibility. And that being a proteosis stone throwaway, I think is important to understand that there might be an impact there. So can we look into that and how that might that juxtaposition of very dark shopping place with a well lit one might actually create an impact on us? So I will forward these questions and I will try to be here tomorrow. Thank you for listening. I really think that it's important for all of us at the end of the day to have that on bias information so we can really be supportive of what finally gets started with this this particular suggestion. Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Very grateful.
This talk, we have a microphone that's looking to hear that hopefully pick up your your voice if you speak up and you can always move it closer. Matthew, we need to move it closer. Uh, yeah, we can. And then there's one behind you as well. Okay.
I'll I'll speak up. Hello, best in seven nine five for real drive. Um, I wasn't going to speak about this, but I'm really happy that you come up with those questions. I think they're good questions for the city staff to answer hopefully by tomorrow. And I could answer some of them for you, but but certainly I could try now. But I was here, I wanted to talk about an agenda and might be what it is. But I said a moment ago, I'm very much in favor of changing decision making honors of momentum. And then. Keep some of you in this a while. The once. Time. My. The way the sign, sorry. I don't, I'm not sure why I'm dealing with the monument sign at this point. It seems like it's. If we're really considering the dark skies ordinance or coming closer to that, that to push this through without the citizens having any input on it, really, in terms of making those decisions. I think it's. Not a good time to do that, to have us have to make a discussion on that. That for the discussion. That's. It was seen through the respect of the citizens.
Thank you.
Hello, American school, most of the house is twenty six Reese. Very bad for the vacation. Um, I want to talk about something that's kind of on the agenda, uh, which is the big project. But really more about the process of the project. When we did the city hall complex, uh, we we had, um. In my opinion, a foolish process, but we didn't use another agent, which I spoke to that whole time. And we have not yet, as far as I know, actually completed the city hall complex, or maybe accepted in reality. I may be wrong about that, but that's my last name. And. And the and the foolish thing we did is we had Chasco supervise themselves. You know, and and they said, oh, we'll be honest. Well, you know, with the best intentions, it didn't work out that well. They have Chasco supervise themselves. And so I don't really like that we are sort of going in that same vein where we have contractors supervising themselves. So I'm concerned, just as as a matter of a process, that we actually now have our engineers who are actually one of the contractors vetting the other contractors and. Creating the pricing. It doesn't seem like really big calls in there for price. And so we're sixty percent over of what you're considering, what we budgeted. And I think a lot of this has to do with the labor and our process. So this doesn't make sense to me, so I wanted to call it here. Um. It's, it just doesn't. It just doesn't make a good process to have people who supervise themselves. But so I think we need deep proof, that deep proof of another owner agent on staff feeling this. So I can talk about that more with people individually, but I said that to Chasco saying that now in our process. Especially when I, and I don't see any indications that this is a cost savings, the way that we're currently doing things. You know, when we're running sixty percent over on our bids for what we budgeted, I know part of it's time, but part of it, I think, is also our. So I think it's a thing to think about, to start thinking about, because we have extra costs that came up, the lawyer fees, litigation and things like that. We got someone who had five years' experience on staff on a part time basis supervising these things. I think we save money, not spend it. You know, you could pay it one place or another, but having someone who's actually our advocate, just more and more seems the way to go. Let me see what else. That's that's the short of it. That's the short of it. The the other thing, of course, is the monument signs. I've been here, I don't know how many years, sitting in these chairs, and I think it's at least the third, if not the fourth time that these digital signs have come up. And they're loading down. Because they don't look very, very aesthetic in this development. So I. Thank you very much for your.
Yeah, I wanted to say, I'd like somebody on panel, when the digital sign question comes up, to ask. What are the maximum luminance that can come from one of these signs? What are the averages that come on those events on the site broadcast? And I also would like to know what the average temperature, or the color limit of the signs ends up being. Those things are important for a lot of police. You know, and for. You know, better lighting requirements in that portion. So I appreciate that now, so I'm very glad to hear so many citizens came out of favor. Full conservation, thirty seven mono, I of course have also been paid for that. So thank you.
Any others wish to speak at this time? Can I go back?
Yes. Well, messy. I was just remembering that, because I I couldn't find my email with the agenda I didn't want, couldn't really look at what was said about the sign. The city of Austin has, I mean, we're not a store, but the city of Austin has a has historic district spread down. And so in terms of the linens that you're talking about, they're restricted to a certain number of linens that they can put on their display signs outside. So I went to a church, it's right next to university. That's the restriction they had when they wanted to put a sign about the church with a good base on it. And then I took, come home and I see Benedict Baptist Church and that being signed up. And the difference between that kind of sign and a historic district. So if we're going to be at least. Period tours are trying to be a different kind of city. To design, at least make the linens better, reasonable brightness, so that they're not just knocking you over. Make this historic. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak at this topic? Thank you. We're going to move on to to number three, just staff referrals. Begin with the administration report. Thank you, Mary Council, everyone. I'll just keep this brief. You all can ask me any questions you have about the admin report. I just wanted to highlight some upcoming events as as there's an already mentioned, we have a better lighting panel that will be here tomorrow. Do you need a reminder? Six thirty, and we'll also have the Zoom option, and we will be reporting it. Yeah. Either in person or virtually. Also, we have a lot of events coming up at the end of the end of the month, getting it April. So the Arts Commission, so council, we've all approved the Arts Commission's project for a community art mural. By artist Vicky McMillan Hayes. And that will be taking place March thirty first. That's kind of the kickoff day, and that's, I think that's meant more for for staff. The public participation will be Saturday, April first and Sunday, April second. And there'll be time slots, we'll be sending out information where residents can sign up for a time slot now and participate in painting murals. So it'll be a collaborative art piece that will be displayed and enjoyed by all. And then also, April first, busy day, we've got the Public Works Open House. And in addition to that, PD is is organized as a scavenger item. So April first will be a busy, fun day and will get to use a city hall. The flooring should be completed by then. And then another update to the album, don't know if we'll be ready for council on April seventh. It's just depending on we can get all the A V equipment set up. The building will be ready, but we just don't know if we'll be ready for council. Try our hardest, but by April twenty first for sure. That and therefore beats. Uh, and we're also hoping to have, we just got furniture orders, so we're hoping to have building staff, some furniture. So we'll we'll hopefully the next month or two will have, you know, half of the admin staff back to the ball. So we're excited for that. So any questions on anything I just went over or anything else to add? Very good.
I probably question for Barbara. Catherine said council members should go to the lighting panel tomorrow, but it's like. Quasi top of like things that we're going to be voting on from up here. So what what is, like, if it's just a game night, we all just go and everything's fine, but.
We're not voting.
What's that? We're not voting, but we're discussing. And. So should we just go and not say anything or?
That would be recommended.
Okay.
So we can't.
But the experts will be there, so I guess.
Thank you.
Ask. Thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not the, you know, I mean, there's a purpose for having this. And but you're not making a moral decision. You are just in the process of. And so, you know, I don't think you need to put forward well. I wouldn't know, or I would, or, you know, any swaying of anything, but the other question, it's your opportunity to vote.
Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions for the administration report? And as a reminder, council, March twenty first is going to be a fairly busy agenda. Because we are going to have a work session. Are we have a work session or are we going to have? It's, well, it's not designed as a work session, but that's when we'll be bringing back more information about the. Right, okay. So so we may or may not need to have a work session, and we will be having a consecutive session. That's correct. Who will we have?
One more question about the seminar tomorrow. Did we invite the leasing agents?
Um. I think, Mary, for sure, coordinating all that, I would have to ask who's there.
Because they are big stakeholders in this.
And this is more of an education. I don't know if they were invited or not, but definitely it's going to be reported, so we can definitely adjust them if they don't have.
Okay.
Move on to public works.
Um, so. I'll talk about a few things in a second, and then we can talk about the one of the. Some comments. The market's breaking the month, everybody should be receiving a calendar. There's a bunch of dates on here, so we're doing football pickups a couple times this month. Sign up, use the brush chippy again at the end of the month. We'll have a couple other activities. There's one drawing household patterns, place removal on March twentieth. So there's a couple things just to pay attention to over the next few weeks. To, you know, to get rid of stuff and start cleaning up your yards a little bit more over the next few weeks. And so the lift station project is completed, so that's the one that is done. And it's all operational. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about is the AMI. So we've gotten most of the meters and the endpoints in very for sure. I think we have a few meters over the very long of the time on this item. So you, we have, we've been starting here, because we've already started these whole speed shit and in the city. So we've already started replacing those for replacement of the last, there's like a handful, like four or five of them left to replace overall that I found. Be selling those endpoints and works that does, we will be able to start uploading those and those can also move to automated heater reading. And then we'll be moving on to the other area of town of Dale. And then we'll be moving on to the other areas, town of Dale, Meadows, and. Those won't be last, because we're also gonna be working. Cleaning out some of the box holes and stuff over there, so, um, and those are also new meters in the city, so. Um, so we'll be working our way over there, so eventually, hopefully by this time. You're running around there, all of here. You might try it on AMI. Um, which is really exciting, and it, it's a, there's a website that residents, then you go on. And those that are little accounts, where they can, for thirty million, get notifications. So if your meter starts running, like impotently, it's, your water meter really shouldn't, you shouldn't be running water throughout your house all the night, all the time and stuff like that. It gets into an order, you'll be like, oh wait, I gotta leave. Something's, something's not right, I think the water is not, you know, whatever happens to be, so, um, hopefully it helps both, you know, people in the water and above. And kind of give people a chance to live, but. Remember, you said you had that, I'm ready for this, and you know, it's, it's, you know, water wrap for. Two hours, that's a lot of water running through there, so hopefully it'll help us in our continuation as well. Um, there was a question about, um, you have on the, our homeless store, well, um, I would. Or maybe able to. Do this also, there's over, that's right, from state. Anyone? Yeah, and, and you don't really notice it, it's kind of buried in the trees a little bit. But it is an enormous amount of stuff that is over there, so we're kind of, we're kind of coordinating the removal of all of the. Stuff that is there.
Cool.
Um, I'm trying to make a change, I see that.
It's, uh, between, uh. Holiday and specs, about, just about.
Yeah.
Hundred yards of. Just baskets. Very densely packed baskets. Um, it will be, well, several days.
It'll be, yeah, we're gonna have to, we'll have to go and just follow with the back of, on the, on catch something and. Maybe even run a rapper or something, get that out of there, and then a couple. All the demonstration. It's enormous amounts of. Um, that will kind of be on. Um. I think those were the main things I wanted to highlight on, on here, um, if there's any questions about those things, then we can talk about the students. Speed and flood signs.
Any questions before we talk about street and speed signs?
Uh, so, yeah, I had a question, it was about the, it sounded like there was a storage unit over there, but it's just a bunch of stuff from a homeless encampment, is that?
It, it's, it's all out of, um. I believe every time they cleaned up under, been wiped. This stuff has been put over there.
Oh.
So.
Okay.
Couple of years of. Parts, you name it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, not, not a storage really.
Okay.
Here, is, is this? Under the overpass, like? Within the, the frontage road, but next to? Because we, we talked about, there's this one overpass where that is where there actually is.
Yeah, it's. Just. As you're going on to the tours one, again, in fact, you can see it better up there, but it's actually. Partially on the highway and some of the. On the surface, but you can see the beginning of it on the surface. It's, it's hard to believe how much it is, but it's quite a bit. I don't know how it was hidden for that long, but.
Hmm, yes.
Thank you in the flesh.
Yeah.
So I guess now we're gonna talk about the, um. Speed and street signs, so, um, back in August, well, kind of going back, back in twenty twenty, there was a survey that went out to ask people. Residents of all streets regarding their concerns about putting things on the streets, and. Speed did come up as a, a thing on pretty much every street that people were concerned about at some point or another. Um, and so in twenty twenty-two, in August, council approved the purchase of, um. These like speed signs, I think, hopefully if somebody's meeting, we've got one that's been installed here on Jones Road. Um, and as well as flood sign, it will also be placed on the water crossing that also. Kind of flash with the water on the creek, and there's, you know. Potential for it going over flooded creek basically, and, and it'll be impacted in that way. Um, so we started the installation, I believe. Place most of these in the places where speed trailer would traditionally be placed in paths. Um, and the placement of these also within, on, you know, sunlight, because they are solar cars, and they do need sunlight to operate as well. And they also, like I said, they only, they only come on when somebody's actually feeding, you're not this flashing all the time like a. School weekend that, you know, goes on for, you know, forty-five minutes or an hour every day. Kind of, they only flash, you know, for a short period of time. Um, there were some residents, I guess, who were concerned regarding placement, so. You know, we tried to place everything, you know, as best we can, um. In, in different areas, um. But, you know, at some point, they have to be, you're gonna have to be in front of some. Like, but perhaps we can not. You know, can't put it at the beginning of the street or the end of the street, it just doesn't serve its purpose then. And they are in some ways. I mean, they, they look more permanent, but they are portable, so we only have, and, and chief can complete this, we only have eight signs, we have at least thirteen locations for shines and you go, so they can go in. They can go out, they will actually be in anonymous mode for a couple of weeks to kind of look at, you know, are we getting speeders and stuff, so they kind of have this like. Learning kind of ability to see if, if they're, more like a traffic study of that. Kind of, chief can, can do that too.
Yeah, these, uh. These signs were one of the. Key items that the Public Safety Committee wanted for this year. Um. Again, we had eight signs. We have been before, the way we responded, speed, like, was supposed to be. You both have probably seen the big, big trailer. I. Purposeful one of the signs, where we, the trailer, because to me, that trailer, I always thought it was, I wouldn't want it in my yard. For a long period of time, and I thought, surely. That would be less intrusive than a sign. Uh, looks like all those wrong, and some shit around, some people don't want the sign of that. Uh, but we can, the sign, there's some. Jones Road, I wanted a sign in front of the human tools zone. I wasn't sure how we were, if we could get them just to be activated. During school hours, so that they're not, um, because the speed changes during school hours, I think we can program them. For twenty miles per hour during this time, here and back. I wanted it there, but I'm not quite. Up on operating them yet. Also wanted them in the, on the streets where we traditionally had speed complaints, we can't move that. We have to move the trailer around. Street to street, sometimes it stays in one location too long, we get complaints about that. It's older, so the battery dies really quick, so it sits there without working for a while. Um. I just thought the sign would have been, uh, more reliable, again, less intrusive than these big, this big speed trail. Um, we can also put more on, uh, I haven't opened one since I'm scheduled to go on the Northbound Center Management Roads. Obviously, we could go on the Southside as well. So I mean, there's a street, but generally, it's like just from the ten mile cars. Um, there is, there's one street that doesn't want it. We had options to move it. Into non-residential areas. I would. Requested the residents, so give it a chance on their street, if they don't want you. We can move it, it's not certainly, but really. Um, it's on the streets where people have requested to assign. A big sign trailer, it's not on pillow. Because we don't traditionally get. A lot of speed complaints on pillow. I, I noticed comments about a speed study and whatever that's, that we have to back it up. On our streets, there is just not enough. Traffic that's wanting to justify the speed study, and in most residential speed studies, by experience. It's not the facts that determine, you know, what you do, when the speed is, the resident's perception of speed, maybe. Doesn't mean that what the posted speed limit is. If a resident believes that that posted speed is too fast. They feel that it's too fast, and you have to respond to that, I mean, you can't just say, well. If I get speed results that show that it's not speed, that doesn't make a resident feel any better, I'll say, oh no, it's not, they're not speeding in your street. So it's, it's our attempt to respond to resident concerns, again, if. If they don't want this, this sign there, we can certainly. Uh, I have thirteen locations, I only had eight signs, my, I was concerned, I'm calling out complaints. From the streets that didn't get it, so this, this really isn't a problem for me. Um, I will put it wherever people want it. We have, we only installed the two signs, and I'll definitely make sure that. Places that we have scheduled to put it, that we'll talk to those residents. Before we do the whole, in the, in the easement there, you see. But I want to, you know, really encourage residents to. Give it a shot. If you have concerns about speed on the street, rather than us. Trying to fix that speed trailer and drag it out there, um. Cause we're still going to get complaints about speed on, oh no, that we have a street that they don't want.
Yeah, just, just for clarification, so when you say they're portable. That's not the whole. Uh, pole that would be portable, because that would be. Or, or is the pole?
We could move, oh, they're not down, I didn't see that.
Okay.
Um, it's basically just hanging the hole, there's a. Just a piece that holds it there, but it can come out, it's not a, seen that plug that we have to break down, figure out. Um, Public Works is doing it themselves, they don't have a contractor that's. Like putting in wires or sensors or anything like that, so we could, you, it can be moved to them.
Okay. So there are, if we deploy it, and there are residents who don't like it for whatever reason, we've listened to that feedback, we can always. Take the, the whole structure out and move it to another location that may be more appropriate, and, and I think, just based on. Where, we have two locations right now, you said we have the one out here that's on Jones Road, where's the second one?
Lovebirds.
Okay, so it's already installed.
It's not active right now, it'll just, just be connected to speed right now.
Right.
Uh, just. Yes.
And this one has been effective here in terms of, you know, we've seen, uh, the mitigation of the speeds here.
It's all right now, you can tell the difference, we're being, we're not flashing now. You can tell the difference in people that are going into the S curve a lot faster than they were. Um. There's one schedule for the bills. Those haven't, we had a speed trailer there. That we had a neighborhood meeting where they wanted, and they requested that. I'm fully prepared that once that sign gets installed. It, it's probably, they're not gonna like the sound now, I think, it may, because. It's, there's just not a lot. There's not a lot of room for speed there, I, I think they're gonna. They may want that moved out of there as well, but again, it was just a response to. They filled their speeders. They're ready to put the signs in, do some striding. Um. I'm looking at where we're gonna put the sign. I don't anticipate it being there. For long, for long, and we can move that. As well. But. And we're moving to, there's places where there's not houses that sound would be very effective.
That's for me.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, so this was initiative done by the Public Safety Committee, so this was not, this was not a council initiated thing. I think there was a comment, I can't, I can't remember where the comment was, but I read a comment that. Thought it was, uh. It needed to be more participatory, but it was done with the Public Safety Committee, so that's good.
For, for two years.
Yeah. Okay, very good.
Put in the budget, and so then we approved the budget.
Good.
Well, again, you can go back to the August twenty twenty-two, we had two meetings on this, um. Uh, the first meeting in August where we discussed the proposal, there were some. You know, questions about how this might. You know, I, I think there's some questions, so we tabled it until the next meeting, and then we approved it as part of the next meeting on consent.
Yeah.
So you can go back and look at the, the transcript or, or listen to the audio recording there. When, and what we approved, the, it was, um, the budget and for strategically placing them around the city, right, and I think that. There are some residents that now have feedback saying. You're, she could place it, but don't necessarily place it in this location because it affects my quality of life, and we want to make sure that we're listening to that. But there's also, like you said, that residents also, you know, the discussion saying that we have a speeding issue on our streets, and so we want to work to mitigate that. And so I think certainly on the public, right, the streets like Vern's Sorbals, on Jones. Those are things that we do want to practice and try to leverage the tools that we have, uh, rather than having to work the trailer. Um, I think the residents, if we can, you know, test it out in residence for areas and get feedback, and, you know, it's portable, we can move it. That's a, I, I think a good compromise, and we've already heard from some residents, you know, directed, um, the first installation, but there's other ones I think that might want to evaluate, see if it's. Something that their, their street might want, so I appreciate you. Listening to the feedback and working with the residents, um, to, to mitigate the issue, but, you know, also putting in our way, that's, uh, that's appropriate for the. That's very empty.
A couple of questions. One, was there any request from systems that will, for the student stall?
Not specifically for a day, oh, but. This, this speeder is significantly, yes.
Okay. And one of the questions a resident asked was, is there any data that supports this, that this actually helps? Uh, with cutting down on speeding on residential streets?
Yeah, there's plenty of studies that show that. Making people aware of their speed.
Right.
It's awesome.
I was in budget finance last year when we approved this, and my impression, which may have been along. Was that these were very going places like Jones, you know, the, the, right? The, the, the kind of main streets compared, not necessarily in the residential streets.
Uh, no, that, really, the main push for this came from residential students.
Okay.
And. They've been pushing. Pretty hard to like speed it up to get this going, so, um. It's just one of those things, not, didn't, I didn't anticipate. The streets being upset about it all, it's, but. There was a lot of push for this on, one or two of our residential streets.
Your perfect. And, so I'm the, the, is on Public Safety, the three streets that I feel ask for it the most are Sunset Trail, Reese, and. And Villas, and if you look at the makeup of Public Safety, it's mostly residents from. Those, those gonna be, so I don't think, if you want to move that one tomorrow, I don't think you'll get much pushback on, on the allocation of those. And I think we have, Ian Casno is just like, put it in my yard, I want it in my yard. Uh, and then we have like, that bridge is, it's pretty large on, on Reese, so I think we have plenty of places to, to put them on our streets, and we do see. As Jones, or sorry, pieces. Wide and long, and. Uh, yeah, people sleep, so, um. Again, like you said, they, they're, they're pretty temporary, they're. Better than the, the trailer. And we can just. Gang them out if people are, are not happy with them, but. That, that's where the design, I think, is so parked right over here, right, so. I, I, I don't, I don't foresee us buying a new trailer, because it's like way more expensive and less kind of. Uh, flexible with where you, where you put it. So. That's our method, because the mid does hurt.
So, do you remember the floodgates? Um, and this is, like, some residents had, uh, texted me saying, you remember the floodgates, um, don't you? This feels like that, sometimes I think it's about how we communicate, when things come up from a committee. Um, like the floodgate issue. Seeing, maybe putting out that eye contact, that here's a picture of it, this is what it really looks like, it's not some flashy sign. It's, it's a temp, it can be moved, that would be good information for people to have. And maybe when things like this come up, it, especially if it's something we can do, that we look at it or. You know, present it to our residents as a pilot project. You know, if we're getting complaints on these three streets. Let's put them on those three streets and then get feedback, did it help or didn't it? And then people get used to it, rather than. And, and again, communicating with whoever's house you're gonna put it in front of, I think is really important. Um, uh, so I wanted to hear more too about what are these flood signs, because the floodgates were really something that brought people out on pillow.
So the flood signs are basically, they're. Signs that will flash when water reaches a certain level of the creek, and I think, I can't remember exactly what they say, but they probably say, well, water crossing, turn around and drown. And so they only run during those events, now they do have to be placed a certain distance from the. Uh, so they have, there's a power bulb, so they have. The distance they also have to be placed from the water crossing. So there's a little bit of a, another factor in, you know, that we, we have an area where we can place the signs. And so this was also, um, something that came through, I guess, the Public Safety as well, yeah, and that, that, it was an issue that. That, you know, for safety, for everybody to be able to know that there is water, that, you know, on trees are pretty dark down. Levels, and so that it is just that warning, so that, then there is water in the creek that. Actually flood those areas that they're gonna, you know, some kind of warning that goes on for a minute.
So we have signs at the bridges about flooding and turn around, don't drown. And.
That's where, and we just go. To the houses that will be affected and not come over.
Okay.
To those.
Okay, just, just want to make sure.
We also have to remember that, you know, especially, so, you know, it's about public safety, so.
I understand.
That is always at the end of the day, like, the decisions that, you know, that we're recommending, or that, you know, the Public Safety Committee's recommending, and that's just like the council statement, just have to remember that. Public safety, you know.
I, I understand that. I I understand that, but like the floodgates were a little much. Okay. So because a committee recommended, the city council approved to buy them. Didn't mean they were the right solution. So what I'm saying is our communication with our residents is maybe showing what these things look like. First, before we go spending the money to purchase them and at least so people are not like, oh, my God, what is that? Which is what happened with floodgates. So that's what I'm saying is how we communicate things. Exactly.
That's a reason.
I just wanted to say you have one in front of my house and I don't have any problem. And not that it slows me down.
And I thought because it wasn't shining that I would do. Go as fast as you wanted.
Yeah, it's not working yet. So, yeah.
Yeah. He's recording us.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah. And and that's fine. I just think it's it's better to be proactive and let people know what it's going to look like. Before you're putting one in front of their house and the whole resident, the street gets up in arms and starts writing.
And I just wanted wanted to add is that. Steph worked so hard and tries to solve our problem. And then when you try and solve our problem by presenting pictures in councils at what they're going to look like, and you present them in budget finance of what they're going to look like, you understand this is what it's going to be. And residents don't show up or don't go and watch the council meetings.
That's where eye contact comes in handy.
Any other questions on? The Steve or the floodgates or or not floodgates, sorry. So you can make that uh, that art project of the floodgate. That's right, or um. Are any of the questions public works? All right, we'll move on to public safety. Anything else you want to add?
Uh, we are. In uh, April first, we are having a scatter of your home to notice a lot of. And we're also working on a three day kids crime camp this summer. We're gonna do a little teaching about. Let's do experience bringing tool mark identification that we're gonna have a. So the crime for the kids that are involved. I'll make sure to put that information out there for all of the residents. If we don't get enough kids that live here, we're going to contact the school and get some more children. And I think there's uh, old Girl Scouts group that wants to be involved. So that's coming out. We're pretty excited about that. We're. In my previous city, we wanted to meet a amount of for war for a senior program.
Thank you. Maybe you have a lot of people interested in that. Thank you. Any questions for public safety here?
Yeah, it's not so much pressure for chief, but um. I want, if I'm sure everyone up here read it, but residents as well, read, uh, share and drink lines. Comment in the forum about first part is. Changing zoning, I'm pretty sure. But the second part is. Chief and secretary starting going. I would say above and beyond, or maybe that's just like all the day's work with uh, helping her.
She had. It was considering went to the contractor and uh. I have to say it was, sorry, that's turn he went. I kind of thought it was similar, to be honest, but he went above and beyond and. Um, worked with this contractor to get her money back to. I don't know if, he said he didn't do it on purpose, but anyway, I think he at least called him and worked and got her money back and uh.
Something about garage doors.
It's about garage door. Uh, he took the money and then made her. They didn't work and uh. I'm I'm used to those things not working out for the consent, but uh. The rod was so persistent that I think the guy just gave up instead of. Don't give the money to her, so. Or her, and that's why she is right now. That kind of thing when no police department has time. For that, they've been now. I think kudos to the county. Just anything. Let's say caring about the both of the odds.
I just wanted to say that this is one of the things that makes me feel lucky and grateful to the extent of that. And thank you, chief. Thank you to the department.
That's right.
And also in that same email, Sharon called out the Carolyn in the Public Works Department for the great job they did with a massive amount of. Yeah, that's, yeah, so that, thank you so much, yeah.
Horace's chat.
Yeah, sorry, about uh, of course, also, I was. Those guys from, from. The under or. And um, they. They blew a hose out on uh, Sunset Trail and spilled hydraulic, um, blew it all over the place. That was super, Duncan was out there like putting that kitty litter stuff on it. That that kid works kid. I mean, he's a, he's a grown man, but you know, but. But he just works so many hours. It's awesome to see him, uh, AV stuff or he's out taking care of spills on our streets and stuff like that. But um, no, that was pretty awesome.
Yeah. And I think that that is an example where communication has been working really well. The eye contacts have been going out to keep the city updated on. Have specific data, staff, uh, remaining visual and about informing residents about the status of that. Any other questions for staff? Right. Cause we're gonna do one for your next item, which is I'd perform presentation by Greg Fump to the media just a visual signage proposal. And this is a customer of Rosengard sponsor, right? Um, customer is going to be one of the producers or or do you want to refer to that?
Uh, I'll just add, the reason I put this on the agenda is because um. Uh, Mr. Holmes had reached out to all of council members but had shared that he didn't hear from all of council members because I wanted to make sure. So I wanted to make sure that everybody got to hear what presentation he gave to me. Um, and please be open minded to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Appreciate this opportunity. I I had a chance to speak with a number of the council members, but not everyone, but I look forward to speaking with everyone personally at some point, but uh. I'm I'm glad we're here. You know, and listening to the commentary this evening, there's signage is is not. So. The one thing we're talking about is our company media choice has come to the city of Sunset Valley. And proposed two visual sign applications. Uh, one being on Highway two ninety and one being on Hata on Brody Lane. And um. Matt, thank you, sir. But the, these are visuals, these are visual signs, which is not currently allowed in Sunset Valley, but. We want to talk about the benefits that these signs offer to the city. That, first of all, these are commercial signs. The the bulk of which we uh, will be leased to commercial businesses to generate revenue, but this, these are signs that are kind of come into the community at no cost to the city. Excuse me. But an important benefit is the ability to communicate the city's messaging. And that, if you, could you, could you uh, fast forward to uh. There we go, right here. So one of the things I've heard this evening and sitting here is, and someone even mentioned this, turn around, don't drown. And that that is a message that we could put out to the city in the event of an emergency. And that's something that would take over the sign. In an emergency would stay put until the the event is passed, the rain's over with, the flooding has has died down. But otherwise. You can see these other messages that we're able to provide to the city. And this is, this is ultimately a community benefit that our company can offer to the city. Whether it's a co-drive or the city is hiring police officers or. Sorry, that clicked away.
Okay.
Well, the other one. But uh, that's an important component and these signs can be contributors to your community. And both in terms of immediate meeting or emergency messaging when the situation arises. Otherwise, they would operate as commercial signs. And we would uh, rent advertising space to businesses here in the community. Uh, the sign on two ninety. Would be available to anybody. The sign on Brody Lane, Matt, if you could, could you show us the the red rings of the Brody Lane sign? Yeah, here we go. So this sign in particular would be on Brody Lane at the at the upper, and this is a rendering, by the way. This is, this is the upper. This this area right here is the upper Cougar Creek undeveloped area. But the sign would be here or thereabouts. And part of, and and Councilman Reed's one of the the concerns you had was, we want to, we want to, we want to. Uh, emphasize benefits in this community. So one of the ideas we had was to restrict this sign strictly for local Sunset Valley businesses. And that could be done through a management agreement. Or the sign could be operated strictly by the city of Sunset Valley. But the options are there to manage the sign as you see fit. It would be one hundred percent controlled by the staff, by the city of Sunset Valley. And you would have one hundred percent control over what goes onto the sign. Uh, excuse me. So. We think there are enough of community benefits and we'd love to talk about that with you guys. So if you have any questions, I think you guys already have. A copy of the proposal that we made.
Yeah, if someone objected to the size that you're presenting, it could be whatever size the majority of the citizens in Sunset Valley decides on if they went with a sign.
This sign on Brody Lane is a, is a part of the compensation that we would give to the city of Sunset Valley. Or the use of the land or highway, like highway two ninety location. So, you know, consider this a a part of the event, of the rent payment paid to Sunset Valley. So you guys are driving bus, you have control over what this sign looks like, ultimately. Size, the shape, the configuration, everything.
Are there other cities within the perimeters, uh, not too far away that also use these signs?
Yes, the city Kyle that has a very similar program. They recently installed some signage on I thirty five. And that signage in particular, I'm not glad you mentioned it, has been accessorized, for lack of a better term. With aesthetic upgrades and a logo for the city's trial. And they treat it almost as a monument sign saying, welcome to the city.
And so events could be on, be posted on this side.
Be anything that you can think of.
Retail could be on there. Art Fest could be on there.
Art Fest could be on there. Anything that the city wanted to come for its art test. Whether it's for hiring police officers, whether it's a, a function that we want to park, whether it's. Uh, you, you know, you guys are one hundred percent control. Content on that side of Brody Lane.
And go to the bigger sign. On two ninety, that would be controlled by you.
Yes, and that would, that would be our sign, but the way these signs are programmed. They operate as a, basically a slideshow. So every eight seconds, they instantaneously switch to a different, a different message. Seven of the messages will be commercial advertising that we sell to clients of ours that helps us fund this project. But the eighth spot would be one hundred percent controlled by the city of Sunset Valley. And you could use it parallel to how you use the Brody Lane sign. It could be anything that you want.
Uh, one of the things that residents talked about previously about some kind of monument noting where Sunset Valley starts and stops. And that would be like the start of where the farm.
That was on the very eastern edge of Highway two ninety. As you can see, this is, this is more than just a a sign on a pole coming out of there. So. This is, again, this is just an example, but we dressed the sign with. Hill Country Limestone and the city of Sunset Valley logo saying, welcome to Sunset Valley. But again, this is just one example. It could be, it could look like anything that you would like.
Yeah.
Does not have to look.
It could be metal, it could be, yeah.
Be metal, it could be stone, we could have landscaping, wood, stone, whatever you want to apply. You, you're, you are the drivers of what the sign.
Has there been any reports of a digital sign causing accidents because of distraction while driving?
No, well, there have been reports, but those reports are not, they're unfounded. Because in the, the, the federal department of transportation. And I think you guys may have a copy of that in your materials. They've done a several studies to show that these signs are actually, they're, they're not, they're, they're. Equally as distracting or not as distracting as a typical sign.
If we rented the land to you, how much rent would you assume that you're offering us to?
Proposal that we have made is fifty thousand dollars a year to the city of Sunset Valley. With a ten percent increase every five year and every five year anniversary of the lease. So two percent per year, which is roughly inflation, uh, recent inflation notwithstanding. Historically speaking, two percent per year is worth it.
So just in summary, you're saying we would have revenue coming in at fifty thousand dollars a year. We would lease a piece of land to you to put this big monument on. We have the opportunity to market on this mark, on this monument, the art fest. On this one and on the one that sits inside on Brody Lane.
The city would receive fifty thousand dollars per year for use of your land on Highway two ninety. And that rent would increase at every five year anniversary of the lease. The sign on Brody Lane would not pay any rent because it's your sign. And we, we can operate it for you, we cannot operate it for you. That's something that could be negotiated quickly. But it's, it's your sign. And you can advertise local businesses, you can advertise members of the uh, Chamber of Commerce or the. Uh, Economic Development Council. City messages, the urgency message component is always there. And we would help with that.
Now, I want to make sure that everybody understands tonight is a presentation only. There is nothing being forced. No council is going to be voting tonight. It's simply a presentation uh, so that everybody hears the same information. And also, don't forget, the city of Sunset Valley used to be totally against liquor stores. We now have total wine and wine. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, one thing I want to address, because I, when we came in, I heard some conversation about the brightness of the signs. These signs are equipped from the factory. With technology that automatically increases or increases the brightness of the signs depending on the heavy of circumstances, the heavy environment. So. And even if you're, please, yes.
Okay, what is the average? I was gonna say, what is our, what's the average? Now, I know it depends on the ad. You can have a tab at this point where on the shirt, it's involved. You have the, and also.
I have a very extensive lighting setting and I can, I'll take it out of this this folder and get it to you this evening because I have a copy of that at the office. But to give you an example, they don't really use the ones, they use foot candles, which I know look down on the weeds. But I, yeah, I pull off a memory, but I think. In the evening, late at at midnight, these signs emit about five percent of the brightness that they would emit at noon. On the, on the next day, the Thursday. So they're very good at dialing down when circumstances. For now. And I know I spoke with, I think it was council of Johnson. There's a sign in cities of Austin. That is very bright, a couple of signs actually, that are very bright here in the evening. And that is a. That's a bad sign, is what that is. So these signs are very expensive, but they're very high tech and they perform like they're supposed to.
Perfect. Yeah, I just, I would like to know, you know, what the average movement output is. That's a standard measure.
Sure.
And it's all used by the city, like they're like. And so, you know, we would want to.
Have a little survey, uh, any questions that you have for council, all these things, service air program? So uh, sorry, I I didn't hear the question. I'm sorry. Oh, it's just gonna open up for council to ask questions.
Uh, so I don't like to have any questions to you, I, but I wanted to say, I ended up meeting with.
Uh, so I don't actually have any questions to you, I, but I wanted to say, I ended up meeting with. Uh, I'm just gonna say, sure, so, uh, we met over there at, at Stonehouse. You know, this is, this is like part of the gig, when people come offering money for things, it, it is our job to kind of like hear them out. And hear both sides and then listen to the residents as well, so, uh. Again, it's like listed for discussion only. I remember being the person at home listening to the council meetings and just. Been like, why are they even with the? But this is like, this is part of it, we just have discourse in public around certain things. Uh, we did talk about, and I'm looking at it right here, they have, uh, somebody brought up the. The J Henry, the Thomas J Henry sign, Sasha, uh, brought it up. And that, that one, you guys should almost just go and tweet it for them because. It's the first thing that is everyone is, I think it's the first.
And in reality is, it's, it's signs like that to give our industry.
It's, it's that one and people's farm pharmacy. That they're just so bright and so that's when you were coming in to somebody that was going to meet with you, that was my first thing, I'm like, Thomas J Henry signs.
That, that is an issue and there are some signs nearby, Thomas J Henry signs a good example, there's a, there's a, I won't name names, but there's a. Uh, a restaurant near the Central Market. That also has a cheap sign. And it just, they, it is those signs that kind of give our industry tone of that.
And I feel that it might not even be Thomas J Henry's sign, he's just like the most common advertising, because there's also a green flag and. And again, so that, that's, that's what you're fighting against, though, one of my other suggestions was. Uh, now, we see how tall this is, how high off there is that rendering?
That one, I mean, obviously this is a rendering, but the state law says that, and this is Texas, this is not Sunset Valley. The state law says that sixty feet above highway is the rule. And I'm not saying that we want to build a sign that's sixty feet tall, but, uh, well, that's, that's negotiable. If, if, if that's a concern for, for the city, then let's talk about that.
Well, so, and as you can see with. The speed signage, which are about this big. Once they're kind of out there, I, I don't know how much they, they are, but my suggestion, which is like. It would be a lot to take on, but. If you were to get one of those on a flatbed truck and just put it there, and get like a special use or temporary use permit from us. And then all the residents can see it, and at that point. I, you would probably be able to sell that to way more communities, just if they were able to see it, be like. It's not so bad, it bases the highway, no one in Sunset Valley can actually see it.
No, I, I mean, our business, the context and the location of these signs is important. We don't want to build these signs on Jones Road. We don't want to build these signs down in the neighborhood and have these things. Glowing into someone's bedroom at night, that's not what we want. These signs are in context, they're on the freeway. And that's where the commercial activities, these are commercial signs that look in any commercial. So, you know, so it's, it's our goal that. The, this, this freeway that runs adjacent to Sunset Valley. Our, our goal is to pull some of these cars off of the freeway and send them down into Sunset Valley to benefit the community. And increase your.
As it is, that is on the way out of Sunset Valley, so. But this side is. So, you know. As it is, and when we spoke about it, I. I, I don't think I realized that Austin and Sunset Valley and. Well, I knew Sunset Valley kind of had a provision or mortuary model because. Was it two years ago, another company came in. Looking at that exact spot, I think it kind of like. Peter out, but.
The, I believe that was just, I believe, Eric, I believe that was just a tradition.
It was, it totally was, yeah.
It was a tradition.
So. As it is, like where I'm from, there are billboards and. I don't feel like I have a strong position by any way, you now know the temperature of it and. I want to say what you're up against, the kind of like what you're up against.
Yeah, the, these are, this is tough stuff, right, and, you know, this, we knew this was not going to be easy, but. The proposal that may have come a few years ago was for a static. This, a, a static billboard meeting, they signed and change its message easily. This is a different product. We have the ability to share. The space with the community, and that's, that's an offering that a traditional billboard can make. This, this is something that's going to benefit the community. This is going to provide emergency messaging capability that a static billboard cannot provide. And part of the deal is you get your own sign on Brody Lane as part of the package.
Other questions?
Yes, uh, can you tell me the size of that digital display?
The size of the digital face would be forty feet tall and forty-eight feet long, wide, I should say. And the, the, the aesthetic component is a little bit taller, again, this is a rendering. But. Sorry.
Forty-eight, forty-eight.
Fourteen by forty-eight, but, uh. This, the, the aesthetic upgrades can be whatever you guys would like, if it's taller, make shorter. The whole, the entire structure can be whatever you would like. Uh, the city's in driver's seat in what this sign would look like.
So, uh, you guys would actually, uh, procure the advertising?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do y'all do political ads?
We do, but if that's something that you, that you don't want, that it will be discussed.
Yeah, uh, okay, that's good to know, um.
And, and we, as a company, our company policy, we don't, we don't rent advertising space to adult content and. So, but it, it, that needs to be qualified.
It would, it would need to be, um, and the one thing I want to mention is that I did bring this up, you know, you and I met. And I did bring this up to C E D, um, and, and about, uh, I would say there was not any strong consensus. Uh, there were some that were interested in wanting more information and there were some that were not so interested, so just pass that on.
Well, I, I want to emphasize, and Matt, if you wouldn't mind, if you could go back to the Brody sign. Because I feel like that's, you know, two nineties, two ninety, but, you know, this, this is in the heart of the city. And this sign, I feel like is the most important one, if I have a tier, this would be the one that's important to you, because I drive this show. I think Sunset Valley has six, was it correctly, I'm wrong, but I think six hundred and fifty residents was the. But Brody Lane has nineteen thousand vehicles per day. So it's important, I mean, this is a powerful tool to communicate to the city and everyone else. And let's, let's keep some business here in Sunset Valley, let's, let's take people off the road, into the stores and into the shops. This was, this is a. This is a rendering, uh, you know, just by, you know, by eye looks, you know, eight by twenty-ish. But again, this is completely up to the city.
And what would the minimum size be to be effective?
In our mind, the only driving factor is what's visible to the human eye. If you want something smaller, we're happy to build whatever you would like. But ultimately, the visibility of the sign is going, is going to be what drives the size on the set.
Right, you give us a.
That appears to be approximately an eight by twenty-four. The, the smallest I would recommend would be, you know, five feet. I mean, the speed limit up here at, at Brody, I think is thirty or thirty-five dollars per hour. But, you know, four or five feet tall by fifteen, twenty wide on set. But again, that's, that's completely up to you guys, and we're happy to.
Back to the two ninety sign. How much space are you looking at leasing? Um, not just the footprint in that, but I imagine as with other signs, there's some kind of perimeter around that.
You're talking about the footprint on the ground?
Correct.
And the.
And any, anything that would have to be around that to protect that sign.
The pipe. Matt, if you could go to. Little bit more. Yeah, yes, sir, right there. So. Inside the stonework is a pipe, it's about thirty-six inches in diameter, so that's. You know, we'll start there, thirty-six inches of, of a pipe going into the ground. And the stonework that you see around it might add a, you know, fifteen or twenty extra square feet. And, but again, this is a rendering, you, you may not like this design. And whatever the design ultimately turns out to be will, will dictate what the physical footprint is of the sign.
So besides the base, like, so whatever size. How do you protect access to that? Is that fenced, is it, you don't, it's just? And the pipe is for the electronics?
The pipe is for the structural, uh, security of the sign, it's what holds. It, it's a structural component, that's what holds the sign up in the air.
It's electronic? And what, and where's the power?
The power will probably come from underground, I don't know the, the circumstances of that particular location. But we would, we would make our best effort to have some of the electricity go out of underground.
Thank you.
Do you know, and this came up, I think during our conversation with the, the previous billboard, where there was, uh. Or speculation or just obvious problems, there being a perimeter around the, the sign for safety reasons, you know, a billboard having. You know, fall rate, these things I've done, you know, where. I think the potential there was, was like restricting use of the land beyond just the, the single footprint of the sign. Is that expiration for that, for your structure, or that you know, if that would be an expiration?
We don't, we don't put perimeter fences around any of our signs.
Well, that's a current fence, it's just sort of, there was like, I think allusions to like safety, you've put in mold events that we have a farmer's market, for example, that's true.
Yeah, I guess sort of the triangle property, which is where the issue proposed signage is going, would. Would there, would, would the entire triangle property be taken up because of the sign, or could there's, could the city still use?
I think the footprint of this sign, as you see right now, might be, you know, one hundred or so square feet. And we don't have, as a company, we don't have any concerns about safety. We access the sign with a bucket truck, if, if there's maintenance required on the sign. We would come out with a bucket truck, there's not gonna be, there's not gonna be a ladder, anything like that, that's going to allow people to get upon the sign, that's not a concern of ours.
Development Services, where, where are you guys using for your, you see, for what year? For the, for the wind load and everything? No, no, it doesn't have to do with just building.
The building, oh.
Okay, so. Yeah, maybe more than, more than.
These, these signs can stand quite a thing.
The other, and one other just. The, one thing I do want to get is stat, also just kind of briefly about, you know, what we need to do, if we want to organize from a, or an approach. However, one other question I have is that. One of, we're in discussions to potentially, um. Take the road that currently is the deadened road, uh, Metro or for the urban trail splits the property. We own, to, and reroute it, um, you know, to make it exit on two ninety and. And that's a project that I think could benefit the city and also as well as A I S T, the, the major tenant there. Um, I don't know if that would change the. If, if this has to be in this exact location, or if it could be, you know, thirty feet further, you know, up the street. But we would, I think we want to evaluate that, that project and the needs that the city has as far as. I think that might cut, the road might cut off like wherever the sign is currently proposed and, and not doing something that, you know, might.
Overall rendering, I'm, but we're, yeah, we're, we're working with A I S T right now.
We had that conversation with Mr. Lincoln Felder, and. Like I said a moment ago, our, our, the footprint of the sign was only one hundred or so square feet, so. We're, we're flexible, I know this, this location is on Triangle you referenced, but I know there's other, other city owned property nearby. We're, we're flexible, and if we need to move left and right. Whatever the cases, we're, we're flexible.
Um, council before opening up for the comments, any emails, have any questions, and then also want to get, uh, this is sure to give us just an overview of the process. In terms of like what our current code allows and, um, what this would look like if we didn't. There's a render that's.
Of a potential, uh, realignment of master sergeant, we're going to have a access to two ninety. Of course, this would be, needs to be in partnership with both A I S T and, you know, we have to get text on. Ultimate approval, text on. Which text on did tell us that, you know, their, their furthest are visible, you know, their ninety-nine percent certainty would never be open. It's because the, we're, I'm not sure, like, we're in a family, but, but.
Oh, Frank.
So if I, if I may, our, our company, we, we're not just digital side people, but. If you're familiar, if you've driven the interstate highways of Texas, you're familiar with the blue logo sign. Okay, it's a, you know, blue sign that contains up to six logos. It might say, you know, Walker, Starbucks, Hotel Six. That, that's, that's a program that our company contracts, I'd say, we, we manage. Thousands, we, we manage thousands of blue logo signs for the state of Texas, that's a contract we have. We have a very good working relationship with text on. And if, if this is the situation that we can help resolve for the city to get. Bob Oregon Trail opened up to Highway two ninety. We will be happy to have those conversations with text on to help you guys out.
You've done it in the other city.
Matt, do you want to give a, just kind of a summary of the, the city's current, uh, code and, and just in terms of just. The process that, uh, so for council awareness, send those part of the backup.
So again, the, the land development code, uh, so because this is not only a billboard, this is a digital billboard, it's kind of double. Double prohibited because we don't prohibit signs, you know, changing, changing font and fully lit signs, right, so those are not allowed. And then second, billboards are specifically called out and prohibited signs, so there would have to either be. A code amendment, right, so the land development code would have to given to your laws of public fairness, or the council would have to grant. Itself, the, the city, a variance in order for this project to occur. So the, that legislatively, those, those would be the only two options, either a code amendment. Or council would have to grant itself, or grant the city a variance in order for this project to.
And when we gone before, in past, granted ourselves various, have we always gone to the zone zoning efficient to, uh, to, to see. Their input before we take it back to council for.
Well, this, yeah, this would be, it's not in the zoning code. Um, it's not in the zoning code, it's. But, yeah, it's not in the zoning section, so it would not be the city going, for example, to the board of adjustment asking.
Okay.
Or variance, uh, it would just be. Yeah, the council granting itself, I believe there were several variances. The city has granted various city facilities.
Yes.
Project, so, and, but those were all, I believe, some, most were either subdivision or watershed related, so the city. Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think the city had to go before the board, right?
I don't think so. There were also previous cover versus previous cover that.
Which is, yeah, watershed, so, uh. Yeah, uh. So, yeah, but either variances would be required, variances from, uh. You know, the sign, the sign code, or the city would have to initiate a code change for signs.
I would also say that I knew in the past, like, the elementary school asked for a changing, so the sign that, that, that was denied.
So that, the last, yeah, the last experience was school asking for it, and the city denied.
And the barn wanted to do something too.
The barn wanted, uh, the barn wanted to have a, because I think they, I think they, yeah, and then if they were to, and, uh.
Not the board, but the chain of bond sign.
Oh, that's been there for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah. It means creating the codes. So Castle, just to make sure we're on track for. I'd like to open up.
I'd like to open up our members of the public, which we should speak this, and then I think it'd be useful if council provided any feedback on. Where they would like to see anything, you know, what they'd like to see next to anything, um, it might be helpful to, to give some guidance, so we either take this as another. Uh, secondary action, or if we'd want to. You know, take it back for, for the questions, et cetera, so we'll open up at this point, as we have members of the public. Cause I, um, and we'll. Then go back for any further comments.
I think Council must. First thing I'd say is that this is the introduction of our own, of Better Life. This would put us out of compliance with that. That desire. And it's. We let our research, so it is an introduction of our sign code. Um, in that, if we did this, I think it would open up a way for any other people who wants. To do the digital thing, which would change the ambiance and the aesthetics. We were spending all this money trying to create a place. That we're, would effectively. Be going counter to anything we're trying to. And uh. Especially when you're trying to create a downtown. We have problems, really, definitely with this. Um, we need to light, we better light, light up what you want, you light the street nonstop, that, that's short, you better light. Light, if you want to light up. With more lights and don't light up the sky, this would light up the sky. So this would be not in the world of lighting. Better lighting in our city together. My concern is the end about the, the destruction of the sign code, where we, I think there's a lot of better lighting ways that we can. Open up our sign code. That I think is interesting. But this would, again, go against them. Uh, in terms of the economics of this sign. That they would build an entire sign. When we, when we do our billboard. Uh, we were, we were doing like five thousand for, for a couple of weeks, right, so, so when you say fifty thousand. Or the amount, I think, these product guys are going to get, that's challenging, you know, it, it really is, and, and I think that's. A significant thing, that if, if we want to go to a partnership for a billboard, I think there'd be a difficulty, and I can do it where it's layerless. It just goes against everything that we're trying to create in our environment, city. So there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of parts to this, but I, my son's being blown up. The people not happy about this, uh, and I think that if we, if we got that there, we'd have. Had more, this happened, people unhappy about digital lighting, saying. Yeah, which is. Short, let's kind of do my phone right now, uh, so. I, I don't think this is good for the city, we, we, we did this. Exact same pitch about. This, I don't know, like, this, maybe the mayor was on council all the time, but they were talking about the signs inside of where Colce is, and. We would have digital signs, we could put all our things, we had the exact same pitch, we talked about putting a monument sign where they're talking about giving us a free sign. We talked about it there as a digital sign, people. Shot it down, um. So I, I don't think it's a good thing for Sunset Valley, I don't think it creates the. Lighting that we would like, the, the ambiance that we would like. Uh, I think there's a lot of reasons to look at our signs, but I don't think that Sunset Valley. Being who we're trying to be will ever think that it's a digital display.
Thank you.
I'm going to see. But then I. Okay. They, uh. Who passed a ordinance, the Land Development. Nine years ago, so don't you have to? The, the null ordinance, don't you have to? Go in and have an actual vote to your grid report, you can't, you don't just want to profit, find, okay, we're going to change it. I'm about to change it, but you have to actually. Get rid of the ordinance. Is that?
You would pass an ordinance amending the land development code, so the, the land development code is codified by licenses, you know, and so it's amended, it's either added to or amended over time, so it's. It's a vote by council to approve it, ordinance amending the land development.
Okay, because I think you're, it used to be that the council had actually voted. To nullify the ordinance.
Do you have a hearing?
Well, yeah, there, there's, there is a, a public hearing component built, I mean, every council needs a public hearing, but.
Right.
In our land development, there's public. Hearing component, whenever the land development code is to be amended. Uh, and generally, we take, even though this is not in the zoning section, generally, we take. L E C amendments to the zoning commission. To have them weigh on it first, weigh in on it first, but yeah, ultimately, it is a council vote, they don't vote to nullifying ordinance, they, they just vote to amend. The original ordinance, so.
Is that something that's changed in the city code?
No. No, it's just, I mean, right, Mark, that's, I mean, the, the ordinance is, you know, amending.
Yeah.
Yeah, amends whatever is already in place, either adding to, adding language to, or, you know, changing language. Removing a prohibition or adding to existing prohibitions, so. It just keeps getting amended over time, and then we keep talking about it, we keep talking about a land development code rewrite, which is, you know. Amending the entire thing, uh, you know, really since the two thousands, uh, but since two thousand. There's just been, you know, multiple ordinances that have gone in and amended the existing land development. Maybe it was done differently, but since, since the, since the version in two thousand, yeah, there's just been multiple ordinances that have gone in. Amended certain sections of the land development.
All right, thank you. Uh, would the city be able to give a list of, of the signs, I know you were saying, could we say, no, little signs? Highway. Could we also give a, a list that would be put together by a resident committee, a law council, for other signs, like, I wouldn't want it kind of, it just. Signs being put out on. Highway coming in our town, because. We are. Multi. Cultural, just, um, community, and so. That doesn't seem right, and so, and we haven't looked. How sensitive are they in terms of what basic people care about right now? Do you just see that control of the?
Uh. I'm happy to respond, but I don't know if I have the floor.
I have. We can, we can read about you up there, for all the questions that you might want to respond to, as part of the, after the public. Yeah, sure.
Um. And then the, uh, you were saying that having these. The big sign out on the highways, maybe draw a reference, you said that valley, someone mentioned that direction, he didn't say, all right, let me see it. But if we have one sign that says, come to Sky House. And we have, which is eight seconds. And you have seven more signs. That are your advertisements to be anywhere. And, let's say, let's say fifty-six seconds. So, the. The highway sign is not going to be much to benefit at all, so is the valley, simply get the clean sign over. So that's the whole point, this seems to me, is that, forget that sign, I mean, just know that you're not going to be real control over, so. Although there's not going to be this to the city, but you would have the sign in the city. And my last comment, any question, is. Uh, where you got the monument over by the bridge, and it says Sky House on it, or it could say, it could say, uh. Bruce Tech, or it could say, let me go back to the picture, World Market, you're going down, and you're going down the road, and you got World Market shop up, and you go, oh, yeah, I went to World Market. Where is it? How do I get to it? I have to go to Parkland, I have to all the way around and get to it, so. I mean, I can see having. Advertising on, and I'm, I'm appreciative that people like to do that, it's just that I can't see that, if I go to the sign and see. Sky House pops up. Mustn't have my telephone ready. To look for where it is, but I don't know, I mean, you're already down and out of town. That's, so, I just, those kinds of things that I think we need to, we need to consider that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's your song, I, I, I just have several questions, uh, I want to know if the, the two signs, the package deal? Or can we just have one sign on two ninety, but increase the lease amount? Uh, I pretty much agree with, with your comments about, you know, having, um. To share the time, and you get only one seventh of a minute, is probably not going to give us much, and is, if you're exiting, then that compounds the. The situation. Um. And on the road sign, should that be an option? I'm curious about who maintains the monument and the actual screen for the long term. Um, because what I kept hearing was that it is a hundred percent ours, so does that mean that we own? The monument and the thing making, once it is, uh, completed, uh, over time? And if it is a hundred percent ours, does that mean that we get the option, should we decide to do this? To actually collect or any from our businesses and make that a hundred percent ours? Those are my questions.
Any other questions?
Oh, 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 okay, all right. And this is, this is kind of unusual in our comments. But on the road signs, for example. We have Academy. And right now, uh, there are members in Congress that want to make the AR fifteen the national gun of the United States. On that announcement, I would imagine that. Academy would want to advertise that they're willing to sell. The national gun to kids who are eighteen years of age. And I wonder if somebody comes along besides Sunset Valley. And sees an AR fifteen, you know, as a national gun, Texas, by then, probably. Uh, you know. What kind of impression that's going to be, now, we, we have been told. That we can control this, provided we make a list of all our exceptions, probably at the beginning of the contract. Later in the contract, if we had a thought of an exception. Then that type of, type of, you could go ahead and come in there. Uh, on both signs, I suppose. Um. And the other thing that, yes, I mean, we, we know now that. Pretty much light is damaging waterway and even, uh, damaging human beings. And so, even if there is a lot of pollution around, but. That will, human beings don't, don't, well, with pollution, let's try to increase that.
Thank you. And Craig, if you want to, uh, speak to anything that was raised and post comment, then we'll also go back to council for any further questions that you have, or. Uh, inflation, where I want to go.
Uh, I thank you for the opportunity to come back, and these are all great questions, and I want to hear each one. Uh, I'll, I'll start here, here's your questions, and we'll, we'll move down the road. Uh, our company has a policy, we, we don't advertise for guns. And if, if, and that's a valid concern. Or, you know, if we're happy to write that into whatever, for the case place. We have no interest in advertising anything. Controversy is bad. And we, we stay away. And move it down. Religion falls into that. We don't have any interest, and it's actually our, our company, we, we, we don't advertise for. You know. Left, right, Christian, you know, on down the road, that, that's just something that we don't do, because. We all have a headline, you know, we don't want to see our company's name in the newspaper as bad for us, so. Uh, I, I hope that answers, that was strange. Another question I heard was. The lighting. Uh, I think it was. Yeah. Uh. A, most, most signs, most, you know, billboard signs, like you referenced. They have lights that, that face up, or, or it's the, or it's the sky. These signs probably gesture like out. And they're, in, in essence, they're, they're different. They have, you know, a wall sign, or a coal sign, or a Home Depot sign. On the side of the building, you know, they sit there like horizontally. So. Hopefully that addresses.
Oh, no, they're dark sky compliant, we actually, they're, they're actually, they're actually dark sky compliant.
That's cheap. That's, that's important.
Yeah, I can actually show you, but you're, I've actually toured both plants that we use. We've done, we've been a long way with these. So they, they basically are domed, LEDs that are domed, and so they shoot down now.
After this meeting, we'll give you some documents, I just don't think, I guess it's that concern. I forgot, there was one other. Jill, and, remind me your concerns, sir.
Uh, I just had a whole bunch of questions, you know, uh, is that a package deal, we use, if, if the city decides that they want to own, uh, ninety? And maybe for the consideration of, yes, don't create a sign here, but give us more money for the things.
Uh, yeah, yes, is the short, is the short answer to your question. This proposal became what it is after my personal conversations with a few of the council members. So, what I heard, my conversations was. The city of Sunset Valley wants to promote its local economy and its businesses, and that's where the Brody Lane component came in. The Brody Lane is for the city. One hundred percent. That's where, that's where the locals drive, that's where all the retail activity is, it's your sign, and we want, that's, that's our way. Of being a member of this community. Is giving something to the city, so that you can. Promote your local community, your businesses. Uh, your initiatives. So, yes, is the answer. But did I answer your question? Yeah, and then the, the other question is, should we decide to go with the new sign? Being that it's a hundred percent our, well, I don't know, Brody, does that mean that, that maintenance is supposed to offer? These, uh, that's. It's your sign, but I mean, again, this is all subject to negotiation, we haven't found there yet. These signs have a lifespan of about ten or twelve years, and that depends on, that, that this sign face directly in the western sun, the afternoon. The Brody will rise north and south, so maybe we'll get some more time, but. That's. That's negotiation. If, if we want to, we're going to be old, and we replace the signs after a certain period of time, we're happy to talk about that.
And then the last question was, if, if there was to be a choice made about this, would you be generating for the city of Sunset Valley? Is there any, uh, issues or concerns that you can?
Not for us, uh, the Brody's is an infomercial, it's your sign, if you want to rent it to your businesses or rent it to whoever you want. Then you would keep one hundred percent of that revenue, it's your sign, so.
Castle, I'm curious if there's any further questions, or if there's any thoughts that anybody wants to express. As we're.
So, um. I just again want to remind us to be respectful of the work that our residents have done. And the money the city has already spent. Both with, uh, Ampersand and with Canalus. On looking at the book and the feel and the identity of our city. Um, a lot of time and money has gone into that, and a lot of that has been focused on creating our city as an artist, artistic. Community, artistic destination, enhancing the environment and the artistic components here. And quite frankly. To me, this does not fit with those. Desires and the work that we've already done and the money that we've already spent. With Canalus, both C E D and the Arts Commission had looked at the monument signs and put it out to the community, the design for those was selected. As was all the designs for the parks, uh, trails and the street signs, that's kind of the direction the city has been moving in. To me, this would be moving in a very different direction, very commercial, very, um, not in alignment with. The work that we've done so far, so I just want to be mindful and respectful of that.
That's very good.
One, I agree a hundred percent with what Council Number Ben has just said, I think that this is divergent from everything we've been working on and all the directions we're going. Second. This is kind of numerous times apparently in the past few years. Or, or things like this, or similar to this, and every time, council and citizens have rejected them. And I think we should respect that too. We, we want to talk about this. You need, need to get citizens involved often early and get, get their opinion on how they feel about this. Um. Some things in here, whether or not it's, it's. You know, out of clients with better lighting. I think it's a distraction from the conversation we're having about their better light. I think it's a distraction from the conversation we're having about their better lighting. And maybe it's better to table this until we have that conversation and come to some sort of consensus about it. The supposed benefits of this are, I mean, as far as the messaging stuff goes, most people get their information these days from social media. And that's what they're going to pay attention to. And the citizens that aren't getting it from social media, like our older residents, are also people who are driving down to Sunset Valley, looking at these messages. The amount of money to commit to this, I believe a quarter was fifty thousand dollars a year, is triple, and that's like one in a hundred forty of our residents. So I don't think those supposed benefits don't amount to much. But I think it's most important that, given the history of things like this, we get feedback from our citizens early on this, rather than later.
I will say that from my perspective, the Brody Lane, I have a hard time getting excited about that. It is too different from the way our city looks. Now, Canalus and Co. did have a billboard, and they proposed a billboard. So Amper Sam did propose a billboard, and that's what came up a couple of years ago. So that was part of their advertising. They had, but it was a regular sign. It wasn't digital. If there was overwhelming support for that, I would look at that. I am not overwhelmed by that. I agree, the dollar amount is not anything to get excited about. I'll be honest. So it's, it's hard to, and the fact that you can't control, that we can't really control what goes up there. And so I, I'm going to struggle with that. I'll be honest with you.
My response to that would be, a penny saved is a thing here. And I say that because I'm aware that the city has, has rented billboards for some of its activities from private companies in the past, whether it's an art fest or some other initiative that the city may have run on. Those funds, I mean, that's, that needs to be factored into the financial part of this. If you run a billboard from another company on Highway 290 going towards the Biden Hill, for example, that may cost three, four, five thousand dollars a month, but that's money that you won't have to spend with this proposal, because you have your own advertising infrastructure already in place. So that's one thing. Ms. Medikis, that's what I read. You mentioned. And what I think I heard from you is a concern of yours is the art festival.
Well, the focus of our city, one of our priorities is about bringing art alive in our city. Not necessarily just art fest, but sculpture and, and things that enhance murals, things that are artistic, that make us unique and not like the city of Austin with all kinds of busy signs. This is like a a really special place that we want to keep special.
And we want to keep it that way too. But keep in mind, if there's an art fest or something, you know, like that going on, the power that these signs have, you have, I don't know the number, but let's say there's a hundred thousand cars per day that travel on Highway 290. If you can pull off one percent of those people and bring them down, and you see that's a thousand cars, with each one of them in a pot, they want to buy some car. They want to experience Sunset Valley. This is a river of commerce. Sunset Valley has a river of commerce on Highway 290 that just blows by without stopping. That's real for those people, yeah, and bring them to Sunset Valley.
All right. So I think we'll determine if there's any momentum based on, well, can people, thank you very much.
I move to approve on consent agenda item number six, both minutes meetings and correction on page four of four. Number seven, financial statements. Number eight, policy changes. Number ten, TFR. Number twelve, bullet resistant shields.
I know where they are. I just stumbled through number twelve only, but I have my little note here. Bullet resistant shield.
All right. So the motion is to provide consent items six, seven, eight, ten, and twelve. Does anybody want to pull them? All number eights. All right. Any other items that customers pull from the consent agenda? Is there a second for the motion to provide consent item number six, seven, ten, and twelve? And second by your consent. All of the people are suing item number six, seven, and twelve. Say aye. I'll put a say nay. Right. We approved on consent under six. From February 1st to November 30th, regular meeting, work session. Under seven, approval of the October, November, and December twenty twenty two financial statements as recommended by the Senate Finance Committee. Under ten, approval of the contract with TFR Enterprises Incorporated for restructuring and removals on Winter Storm Mar. And under twelve, approval of residents operating in Sunset Valley Police Department to apply for bullet resistant shield grants. I'll put that a big two. Our next agenda item is number eight.
A couple places I should have been marking down. Do you have a signature authority granted to be owner manager?
Yeah, so previous, the previous staff members were the city administrator and all of our financial policies. Assistant city administrator, which is now no longer a position. So we did change it to accounting manager, but the accounting manager never processes the checks. So that is handled by the accounts payable or accounts payable slash utility billing. So, and so basically we have a signature authority. It's, I ran out myself. Actually, what, what else? Authorized department. And right now, chief is our other secretary. So as far as accounting manager, I don't think, I don't think you have the accounting manager signing the check. Yeah, the accounting manager wouldn't be signing. I think it was approval for purchase works.
So my question is, how was this presented? And then I noticed really quickly two things here. And the background for FP two oh one, we've got historically still even set up. Unless that's been corrected. On FP two oh one, we talked about HGVs.
Oh, H, oh.
Sorry, I had it here. I lost it. But it's right near the beginning of this.
Wait, the actual policy itself, right? Okay. And that was FP two oh one?
I believe so, yeah.
Let's just correct it now. Where were you? It's the second bullet in the background.
The second floor.
Yeah.
Go on further. Now the other direction. No, up to towards the top of the page.
It's, it's.
Well, you're going to see it. You're going to see it in the cover page of agenda item number.
So it's not in the policy?
Yeah.
Yes, policy is correct. Oh, the policy. Okay.
Right. Right. It's just in the.
And then this is in FP two oh one. I got it in there. A minus four nine five in a thousand nine hundred ninety. Again, it's a little quibble, but a good thing to correct in actual, and often you have it. It would be on page twenty six of the actual financial policy and page forty six of that.
That may be deleting a space based on the red line that you see there. I think it doesn't count that. Yeah. I don't think it's actually adding a minus sign. I think it's still leaving a space that brought up the forty nine ninety nine.
No, it's a minus twelve.
She's going down.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's the space. I think it's the space. It's like a format.
Again, sorry, I wish you had these tiny little quibbles, but should it be dot nine nine on all these as well? Yeah, okay. Sorry, I didn't edit it, right?
I would just need you to go through and add a dot nine.
This is the result of being on finance for two months.
All right. With that, do you want to make a motion to approve the?
One more quick question. What's being presented here is exactly the same as what was recommended by budget.
With a few changes, I think, that we made that evening. There was a fourth policy that we put in, that that went in, and there was some discussion, and we decided to walk. Related to.
There were two more.
There were two, yeah, there were two more. Yeah, basically, we, those needs were worth, but these three, these are, these are as recommended by the budget.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve with these minor changes, the financial policy changes recommended by the motion finance.
Just a question for a second. Any further discussion? All the neighbors say aye.
Aye.
I'll put a say nay. Right, the mission or the items approved. Thank you, Budget Finance Committee, for working through these, and these are important, having direct knowledge of having to sign so many FOs. All right, those decisions are not, which is considering act on selecting Brooks Watson and Company, ELLC, that's these financial audit services, she getting this year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three audit pursuant to RFQ number zero one one seven two oh two three. And we'll staff give us an overview of this.
So again, this is an RFQ that council approved in January. They have their current auditors for many, many years. Even before they, they were Hanian Company. It was another company called Derelict Butler that was bought by Hanian Company, but about a decade, about the same somewhat company did, informing our audits. So it's definitely time, I believe, we met for our twenty. And then it happened. So it was, it was more than time. We did have three firms respond to the request for qualifications, Brooks Watson, the CEO of Round and Hill, and our current auditors, Hanian Company. Staff, so for the, for the RFQs, you can see the, based on the right here, you can see the scores. And as an average for our scores, and we felt Brooks Watson and Company had the best the best statement of qualifications, the best proposal. We really liked their timeline. We did reference checks and every city of the parts. Basil, Blockheart, Taylor, I heard back from someone else as well, and everyone had great things to say about them. So that is who we are, and we can answer any questions you may have. Just, just so you're aware, so this is what we currently have budgeted in fifty thousand dollars in costs for that every year for Hanian Company. So this is to be determined. So request for qualifications prices not, you know, pricing not, pricing is not included. So once, if council likes Brooks Watson and Company, we will then go and negotiate a contract with them, bring their contract back, then we'll know planning for next year, for the budget next year, what the, our audit for this current fiscal year should cost. So any company will be doing our audit for this full year, twenty one, twenty two. They've already started working on it. But this, potentially, we will have Brooks Watson and Company starting on audit for this current year and the next.
First, I wanted to say how much I appreciated the work that finance and staff has done to correct the problems from our previous audit. To get next year's audit, or this year's audit already started, so we won't be late again. And third, to go through all this work to do this, that's a lot, and that's really great. You guys have done a really great job. One thing I would like to see, unless I missed it, was, I mean, you have a set of scores for all the applicants, but you need to publish their criteria or the ratings you gave for all these, unless I missed it.
No, I didn't.
I think that should be part of the public record. I mean, I totally trust what you guys did here. I just think it shouldn't be published.
The criteria are published, but I didn't.
I mean, the score should be published. Oh, okay. Yes, I saw the criteria were published. You guys.
I hadn't. I guess I didn't. Scotty sent me an email, and I just wrote mine down, so I can, I can provide that for you guys.
Okay.
I mean, do you want to look at that before you make the recommendation or?
No, I just think it should be part of the record.
Okay. So next time it's included, like online, because that's basically two people's scores, so it's average score, so just, but.
You know, yeah, I mean, you should be able to ask the question of, what is your score? Why did you score it? Got you, right?
Other questions from council on this side? Anybody wanting to make a motion in this one? I'll make a motion to approve. Motion to approve selecting Brooks Watson and Company for this, this financial audit services with the additional providing of the record scores as part of the backup for this. And second to that?
Second.
Just for a second. Any further discussion? All the neighbors say aye.
Aye.
I'll put a say nay. Right. Moving on to item number eleven. Consider act on reporting a bid to Smith Contracting Company as working to achieve your twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget. Budget I'm going to approve for the sunset and lower trail waterline and roadways. Jones Road drainage project, Highway 290 waste water line and AST customer. And Carolyn, do you want to give us an introduction?
Sure, yeah. Here, but this is a joint, like a mine C I Q project, a complete number project. And very much, very, I think, everything from motor, sunset to A I D to Highway 290, it can be covered by the city. We are, we had five bids come in for this project and this contract was the little bit. So back in, so many times, we asked about it years ago, regarding this project, it's been going through gearing. Now we're at construction. During the summer last year, we did present a budget of findings, the engineering estimates, which they had estimated at that time that the project was possible over two point one million dollars. And so the construction actually has been a little bit lower than that. So that's, you know, giving about eight months difference in time. And so that's, that they did, they did come in probably lower than they were. Does that mean that there was an increase in cost when you budgeted like back in twenty twenty one? Yes, there was definitely an increase in cost. We saw that with the lift station, we see that with generally every project, their construction costs have gone up significantly over the past few years. Just getting contractors in on some projects has been very, very favorable. So that is where we're at. So we are looking at, put together a question, this contracting bid. And there were, it could be a cancellation. There were a few that were kind of grouped together, and then the other two were grouped closer together as far as bidding goes. Home first committee did recommend they wanted to bid all the projects together, because they thought they would get more head of the bid, and we actually did. We got a project on this one. So it was actually a good thing to put them all together at that. So we're looking at the one point nine million for construction. Of course, then you take a ten percent contingency on top of that. And then there are some money that's left in engineering, construction services for, for even reporting and all the things that the engineer would be doing over the next, you know, timetable for this project. So it is about two point one three nine million. We are looking at doing, we can, we can, I'm in the budget for the hundred thirty four thousand here. Taking it from a couple of different budgets, because this is a project that comes to. Budgets, because this is a project that comes to streets and water and wastewater and drainage and a couple of other. Um, kind of little things kind of all mixed together, so it is a pretty big project, um, the city would be entertaining, because it is going to affect. Two roads and a row of tiny things, you know, so that, for example, let the A I Stephen. You need to type things for this thing to happen in a way that's having the least amount of impact on. Traffic and people and school and everything, so, um, the one thing we are still waiting on is a cost. From the city of awesome large utility on the purchase of their infrastructure, so part of the A I S D version project is to. Purchase the disheated structure that's already in the ground, because once they come, us from the city of Sunset Valley, those meters that. How they're no longer needed, so instead of us putting in new meters, we're trying to see if we can purchase those from the city of Austin, so we are still waiting for that, so we'll come back. So at that point in time, when we do get those schools from the city of Austin, we'll be coming back for. Um, to counsel for a purchase agreement for us to be able to purchase those, those, that infrastructure from the city of Austin. Um, Freeland Tark did do and then did, um, do reference checks on spin contracting, and if I am not mistaken, I believe they have them. I know they did bypass project, I think, here for Sunset Valley before, so I think they are contractors who work here in Sunset Valley before, so. Um, submitted your reference check, all the reference checks came back positive, that they would, you know, were being heard, city St. Mark's, city of Kyle, and other areas, so. They, they, they did get good preference, so. We are here to ask for counsel, and counsel wants to move forward with this project.
Thank you, and this is a, so, this is probably the biggest part of that, since this is already just in terms of. Boss and scope and in acts residence, I did hear of one residence and. Comment that he says that something, we take these on, we want to ensure that we are having. Oversights and that the project is, um, you know, taking into accounts, you know, everything we can, this first quality control. Can you just explain just your perspective, like, what? How we'd approach this project, you know, what the oversight process would be, and you know, how we could ensure that the work is getting done, and it's such a such a large project. It's it's managed, managed by at least.
It is a large project, and, um. You know, a lot of, you know, people say different things about that and how we manage that, um. The thing that I could, you know, we, we, you know, Dakota would be kind of looking over and kind of be the project manager for the city on this project. Um, but I probably, you know, we discussed this earlier, what we need to do is make sure that it goes not have a. And things like that, so that he is out being able to be, has a real background in. Areas and stuff to be able to go out and, you know, manage the project on a more regular basis. So we are going to be, you know, looking at how we're going to arrange, you know, our workloads and stuff, just to make sure those things happen. Um, so we plan to have pretty much like weekly, daily reports, kind of field reports that we are going to be doing. So that we can document the work happening, so that we can check in, you know, we'll be checking in with the contractor, and of course, uh. Gary, Freeland Tark will also be coming in to do certain things that the engineers need to expect, and I'll, I'll let him speak to that. So they expect it, make sure it's up to standards in there, because they're going to be the ones signing off, everything at the end, yeah, it's done, it's expected. So we do have a plan in place to have pretty like robust inspections every day on that. Um, we'll be using the software we have, we have PubWorks, to make sure it's all there documented, we have pictures that we can upload into it, so that we have a good record that. We are up as all in the cloud, it should be pretty, pretty good to be able to keep that information in place, um. But yeah, I think that's kind of where we're at with that, is making sure that Dakota has the time, that he's managing, you know, mostly this project. And that we also, we, you know, meet with the contractors, so that we're phasing things in a way that has the least amount of impact on. Not, you know. Like I said, we're not disrupting the school and on on that, that we're not, you know, not doing like. The two ninety thing during, you know, ACL or something like that, because we don't impact the holiday, and we're going to be respectful of those areas that we're working. Uh, and and we also will be having, uh, some street meeting. To meet with those residents on the streets, just to give them the idea of what the construction is going to look like, what the timeline, what those streets will look like, must be kind of meet with your contractors, kind of look at those scheduling. Issues, and like I said, I feel like Gary speaks to what they will be doing on the project as well, because I think, I think he's online.
Yes, ma'am, hello, council. Um, so Freeland Tark is also going to provide project oversight and project management, um, on this project. That'll, uh, encompass us taking materials, submittals, we will, all the materials used on the project, they'll be submitting us. Uh, those material specifications, we'll be reviewing those to make sure they're compliant with project, uh, documents. Uh, we will be doing, uh, interim site observations of the work. Uh, there will be a material testing, uh, when we're doing trench backfill, pavement. Uh, installation, things like that, a geotech will be testing those materials to make sure everything is compliant with the project documents. Um, we will be evaluating, uh, the pay applications, monthly pay applications, checking quantities. Uh, we typically hold a monthly, uh, meeting with the contractor to, uh, you know, document ongoing issues. Uh, in addition, we always make ourselves available daily, uh, for any kind of basic field questions that come up, or questions on the plans. Um, you know, via cell phone, or if we need to, uh, get on a quick Zoom meeting, um, and then again, in-person meetings as needed. So that.
The R F I process, I think that's something that, um, needs to be respected, and so I don't think anybody. If you're familiar with that is, that's the request for information, so if there is a question about something. That is going on with the project, and that the contractor has, say they want to change something and do something a little different, um. For example, we did have a couple of those with the lift stations, okay, this, this, this came up in the field, because. Great as plans are, we'll always have changes, things that come up in the field that you need to do, so that having that R F I process that. We say, so they, they may ask us, and then we're going to say, okay, let's go through the R F I process, so that they send that to Gary, and Gary has to look over that and make sure. What the standards are, what is it, maybe shifting something, that maybe this, whatever, but respecting that R F I process that got half. I think that's incredibly important, and also, Rolando will also be involved with this as well, because it is a water line. Standards to do that system, so he's very, he was very much involved with the list station too, so. Him and Dakota were out there quite briefly with the list station, just to check on the status, just to check on everything. And I think he did, they did a really good job of pathkeeping when it comes to those utilities, so Rolando will be pretty heavily involved on the utility side. While working in utilities, and then when you, you know, when it becomes more of a street project, it will be more of, you know. Dakota will be definitely, you know, kind of overseeing that portion of it, um, and then maybe even the drainage, we may bring salmon a little bit on the drainage and Jones River drainage. Uh, so yeah, I think that that R F I process, I think, is incredibly important. And I could say, you know, there's some of that that may have been a little bit missed in some of the facilities project. Um, and so that's one thing, like, it was something, I don't remember what it was, that, um. Happened with the location, something that was super simple, but I was like, no, we need to have this documented in the R F I, like. I want to say yes, it sounds great, but documented in the R F I process, that would make that team, you know. That process is respected, and it has been, you know, signed off on.
Thank you, I'll open up for council for questions, I know that this is a, a large increase, you know, from what we personally budgeted, but finder. This is something that has been discussed, as we didn't want to add a budget amendment until we knew the costs, you know, at the time, we, we knew that this is going to like. From what we were related, had an R C I P back in twenty, that was built in twenty twenty, and then into twenty twenty-one. Um, and so we're at the point right now where we have this final cost, and we can make a determination, this is moving on, or we see it as a city. Um, so it's council questions for staff on this side. Is Maria?
I don't want this to be perceived as critical of of staff, I think you do absolutely all the right things, um, and this has been a well-managed process. When I was on, on, on finance last year, we pushed back on allocating money for this, because we said, there isn't a plan, there isn't a fit. Um, so I'm glad to see all that happened, but. It's got to be concerning that. From the initial budget to this, to now, there is a sixty percent increase, eight hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, we talk a lot about being physically, physically responsible here. Um, and part of that is looking at something like this, where we have this kind of dramatic increase in cost. And asking why, and I realize, I, we have six to eight percent push. We had in the Austin area, a backlog of projects that were delayed because of, of the pandemic. Um, and Indian other things are going on, but still, a sixty percent increase is, is really significant. And I think maybe what's, one of the things that I think is kind of missing, you're doing all the right things in terms of managing projects as it is now. But I think we need to look harder at thinking about cost containment and these kinds of things as we lead up to these projects. Um. In my career, I've done a fair amount of working with contractors. Um. And having oversight over contractors, um, and. One of the things that I was taught, among others, was you don't contract out the things that are your core. That are the things that should be your core competencies. Right, and as a city, one of our core competencies has to be managing our utilities on our streets and our infrastructure. Which does not mean we have to do everything ourselves, but we ought to have enough expertise in-house to help us manage them effectively. To do things like helping with project management, helping with cost containment, helping with those kind of things, and I think that that is missing from our current structure. And I think we need to think harder about that, about what kind of expertise we need, we need to have, whether it's a permanent staff. Contractors who are working in the interests of the city, because. Contractors are like any other business, right? They are looking to build their business to make money, to maximize profits. So there's always going to be conflict between that and looking out for the customer. There needs to be balance on the other side of someone who's saying, I am. You know, my job is to look out for the entity that is contracted. And then when I supervise contractors, I have to constantly say, no, this isn't the right thing to do, we don't need this, you need to do this, right, there's a lot of. And this goes to your R, R F I process, a lot of feedback that happens in any process, because no plan is perfect. And you need someone who is advocating for your side. To make sure that things are working as well as possible, and that you are not spending money and and doing things that you don't need to do. So, I mean, I'm not arguing against going, going ahead with this, I think we should, but I think we need to look at. Improving the process that beats up to this kind of thing. Um, so that we know at least that we've done, at the very least, all our diligence, and we're doing everything we can at cost. As well as effectively manage our projects.
That's all right here.
That is why, um, I believe that Dakota was hired, because Dakota came from another city in our public works. And has knowledge of a lot of the, these, uh, projects. Also, a lot of these projects, we have talked about for, what, five years or?
Probably longer.
Um, so I know the whole extent, how long it been, some people may have not been involved, this, I have been stayed on top of these. Jones Road, for instance, this is one that is redoing what previous engineering firm had done previously. So in other words, we are spending more money on top of a project we thought was going to solve a project problem. Which is flooding off of Jones on to, please, is it? And we're going back and redoing the previous engineer slash contractor's job, and that's what Jones wrote in Sunset Trail, and so we're hoping this time. It, um, will solve that problem, so again, a lot of these projects have been discussed for years and years, and and. The cost increase in budget and finance, we didn't approve a higher budget for these amounts. Even though we knew the prob, the, uh, cost was going to go up, because we were told about that, and of course, we're going towards what, a recession. And labor costs have gone up dramatically. Because we didn't want that information shared to the contractors, because once they see that we have allocated more money, they're going to. Put their bid up higher, that's the reason, uh, the last engineering firm was fired, is because they were overheard on the microphone saying. We bid this project. Certain words they said, hi, and now council is questioning that. That's all I have to say.
Other questions from council?
I think, I'm sure that. Um, I, I don't think that we. Have the, that concept of all, I don't think that Dakota has all the expertise, all part of the project. And we're still having, uh, a contractor who's making money on the field. Supervising the field, as opposed to the accounts. The engineer is still doing a lot of supervision, and and so I just. I believe, you think that the cut, if this project. For an owner agent, was that, was that about a million dollars, that was like, that was way back then, so. I'm sure we're probably right, if that price should be picked up, someone with skill set. Comfortable to doing all of this, doing the project, that was the owner agent, so I'm just going to say that. Like I said then, I think that we need someone in the capacity of an owner, owner agent, project manager, supervising this. And this in-house on our shop, at that level, of being able to look at all of this, who isn't our engineer. So, I'm, I'm just going to say that, like I said it. The last time we, when I read it, and you go back and see that I did it for Chicago, saying again, and so, um. I, I, I do have concerns about that, I, I think the amount of construction we do in the city warrants it. I mean, we won't, we do with the city, I know we've had this thing, we didn't many for.
Four years.
Well, yes, and 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 I, and I think the, the management we have in charge has a lot to do with that, but that is, is. Significant, and I know there's this desire to do everything, but I don't think that it, but what I'm saying doesn't include that, right? There's no reason why we can't add an owner agent to this project, there is, and and I think that it could be done consecutively. Or or do it on its back, but I think that structure is missing, and and, uh. Yeah, I, I complain, I, I, I'm complaining to the amount of engineering to the amount of production the last four years, I certainly.
Any, any, they also just. That's, I, my position is that we've had a backlog of these projects, and we need to get this done, I realize that these are. Things that we have, uh, talked about, you know, management process and working with staff, I want to make sure that. We're committed to not only the oversight, but also the communication to our residents, which is another really important factor as we go forward, this so much, that that's kept in mind. Um, I think it, some of the discussions that we might have is, you know, about, you know, verifying that we have the right oversight in place, so. Uh, I'll work with staff to make sure that, um, that we are taking council's feedback and residents' feedback into account as well, that we want to bring back. So in, right, based on staff discussion, we want to bring back further, um, uh, considerations for budget amendments, to include additional stuff, it would be so in future as well. So, we're, for example, did, do these have a rubric to them, or is it just? It's just lowest bid and.
This is not a request for proposals where you have a rubric for judging against something.
Right.
This is a, a, like, a basically a little bit, it is a little bit of call by painters, and they, they reference to check that as a woman.
Okay, I, I feel like I had seen a scoring. And go back to the last one, I remember when we used to get to see the, the scores there, and if there was any outliers, we'd be like, but, uh, okay, yeah, that's. That's for you. For a minute, I always, I always look at, so what are you?
Oh, what, um, well, I think it's time we get projects done, because these have been on, these are the C I P projects that have been on our list for. A long time, it's nothing new, I think some really good points have been brought up about oversight, I understand the, the idea of having someone who we're paying to do. A job for us is overseeing the job they're doing, and everybody else is doing, that's a really good point. So I think maybe we want to look at that, uh, but we haven't had a chance either to, um, really experience some of the new staff that we have. Like Dakota and Rolando and their capabilities, and so I think we need to move forward, I think we need to test them out. I think we need to move forward. I think we need to test them out, see how it goes. Um, with, in keeping in mind that as we get our processes down to a, a more effective methodology, that we might want to look at, uh, having a project manager on site, on staff. But, um, I think we need to get some stuff done. So I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the Sunset Trail Jones Road Drainage Lone Oak Trail, Highway two ninety wastewater line and, um, A I S D can, can suit customer conversion.
There's a motion to, uh.
An award to Smith.
Approved.
Uh, oh, and a word to.
Their second.
An award to Smith.
And.
And the legend.
So.
How many pieces floating around? Okay. Thanks.
Yes, I will second. I also agree that we need to, um, uh, I'm excited. We're getting some action and getting this done. This has been, uh, a long time coming. And I don't think it's going to get, uh, less expensive as we go forward. So let's, uh, let's get it done. So, thank you.
That's right. Oh, that was a discussion. I have to make sure.
Um, I don't want to start off, we should move forward, but I think my, my comments are for looking ahead where we should do the future.
Yep.
Because again, if we're really, we need to make the actions that made us responsible.
Well, we will learn from this.
Only we had a way to.
Yes.
Well, so how about as these projects, each piece of these projects go along with our new staff people and their capabilities that we have an after-action report, what worked, what didn't work, what would we change?
That's excellent.
Perfect.
Very good.
We'll come back with, um, yeah, a report on all the lift station project, you know.
That's excellent.
We learned, you know, but it worked or didn't work and we'll apply that as we move forward into, you know, much larger, uh, uh, projects. But I, I, I'm excited. I, I think the list station went really well, you know.
It did. For how long we worked on that?
I know. It's like, yes.
Done.
I can retire now. It's our first project.
I know, I know. Three years, three years, yeah.
Something I'd say about the lift station is previously we were talking about doing a total new lift station and then Dakota came along and said, no, you don't need to do a new lift station. We can recap it and I'll focus on it. And so thanks to.
He doesn't, Gary, it technically has, we did, we, because the bid that came in, we threw off our best on that. You know, a full project. And so we came up with a project at first and then the permits are good for a long time. We can, if we ever decide on, we can rehab this part of it, we can move forward with that. It was a great collaborative effort on that.
Right.
All right. Looks like we are ready to vote. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
I'll go sit in. And everybody's input in this, um, process. What you miss out on.
Why do we have that extra? It opens it up for discussion. I mean, we've, we've been discussing it, but like, what is that opening it up?
Well, we're discussing the motion that's actually on, so if somebody makes a motion and we're, you know, responding to that. And so there's definitely going to be, I don't necessarily think this is the right motion, but you know, that, that can be in commerce. That's my, I feel, I, I feel like we're probably just a little more collaborative on the motion as we go through, but I think it's, it's pretty big. Sometimes feel like to just jump into the motion. All right. So that takes us to our last, you know, I, um, this is a presentation for discussion, possible action. Um, on the resolution, uh, for two city-owned properties, two seven oh one, you're really in, from a small family residential to park. And seven thousand, single-family residential to conservation under section one fifty dot O six four, land development here. As recommended by the Parks and Space Plan. And just counsel, this is not to make the zoning change, it's to initiate a resolution that would go for the zoning, uh, commission for their review and recommendations back to council. So you're initiating this office, but we will see this again. It'll have multiple chances for public input at the zoning overhaul and then back to council if it comes back. Um, maybe it's something important for this. Um, so this is to carry forward some of the conversations we've had, you know, as councils that really when we purchase property, there should be some designated intent behind that. And part of that can be a zone, can result in, and likely can result in a zone change, especially for purchasing small family residence property. Some of this is cleaning up for the history that goes back to two thousand and ten, when we purchased, uh, thirty seven one of her around that timeframe. And you know, there was a committee that was formed at that time that made a recommendation to, um, to preserve that land. Um, that, you know, has come up in communications many times or the, the, uh, the course of city and looking when I was on council and I know customer, our partners getting through a lot of that conversation. Well, we did recently quickly with Parks and Space Plan where, um, an assessment of all the city properties and the utility of them and some recommendations, um, were made. And we also, as a council, made a decision to say, we're going to take a, a parcel by parcel approach. We're not going to take a blanket approach. However, there's a lot of alignment of these two properties and both the concepts that we've come up with and discussed for use, use of those properties as well as the intent, you know, behind what some of the properties purchased, uh, original temples when we were referring to them. And so I would just in general like to see us when we purchase property, you have a, a decision about what we're using that property for and make zoning changes more um, in line with the purchase rather than waiting thirteen years, you know, for, for this direction. Um, there has been a lot of open, good comments on this particular item that are, uh, I didn't see any negative comments in terms of opposition. I could see all, all people saying that they prefer this. Um, however, this is an opportunity for public to weigh in, not only tonight, but in the, in the zoning, if we report this as well as when the council feels that part. So I'm supportive of this. I think that these are two, uh, areas of land that the city, um, can, can service our residents by these zoning changes, particularly, I think, um, you know, the, the, the park designation, we have an opportunity to really open up access to the man track in those, those areas of the city that we need to, um, divert parking from the streets and have the designated, as we said before, improvements that's in alignment with, you know, the improvements that have been, uh, recommended by the Parks and Space Plan. And I'm excited about having that, you know, potential there. Um, however, this is something that, you know, council, uh, is going to weigh in on with it, whether we want to forward this resolution. But I certainly wanted to, to forward this as an action, carry forward the momentum we already have from the recent, uh, resident input over the processes that we have. So I don't know if there's anything that staff wants to add to that. Um, you know, I think it's in the background, but you know, at this point, simply the evaluation could move forward with it and there will be other options for us to discuss this with the, the fellow chair.
So, um, we only bought sixty one oh seven a little more than a year ago.
So and it's just a number twenty, something change on it. So I think we're moving pretty quick on that one. But we pushed it all past the Parks Open Space. Um, I'm for this. This was part of my, I think, my campaign material, I think specifically these two. So, uh, no surprise there. And I'll just reconfirm before it goes through the park. When, when are we going to try and rename those, by the way? Well, uh, actually a discussion with, uh, our new, uh, our new expert. Uh, is actually, uh, and we'll do some more research, but, um, it's not necessarily just zones, something part, all of the part. It has to be designated.
So dedicated part, dedicated, dedicated part. That's state law case in, um, with regard to, you know, what can, uh, have specifically with property that be sold for another use, it may start difficult to do. Um, and then, um, also it affects the, what can be done on the property with regard to, for instance, a um, private company or a rent utility lives through it, or even a state want to rent, let's say. There's a public process created, uh, whereby it's customized and populated for a way in on that.
And, and just so, you know, we, you can have our three, kind of, kind of three great zoning categories. For example, could, could the council then dedicate thirty seven Lone Oak, change to conservation? Even, even though it's on zone part, they can dedicate that as part of the, of the.
I, because I thought it was going to be park one, two, three. I don't actually mind the current names. It was like, wait. Descripted, but, um, and then, uh, park we would have the ability to maybe put a parking lot.
A minute, exactly.
A minute, a school called.
Even though it's, it's, it is a sensitive site, we are recommending, you know, in line with Parks and Space Plan recommending park. Because I believe, you know, there's, uh, potential for putting exactly part of that.
Yeah.
So, all right, I'm good.
Can you just run through the definitions of conservation, just to refresh everybody's memory?
Sure. Uh, the environmental conservation district, it says, uh, provide publicly and privately owned persons for permanent preservation, including special wildlife, wildlife habitat, including power listed nature's future status, ecological and geological preservation, water quality, air purification, science education, nature observation, kind of duty of aesthetic home space and nature area operating for the citizens of South Valley.
It is a mouthful. So this property, Lone Oak has a trail through it, correct? And so will that trail remain? Is this something that is okay for, with the conservation?
So, and it actually, it will run in line. Because, uh, it'll it'll be continuous with the South Hills Conservation Area, which is already a.
Little, ill connect.
Yes. Kind of already knows.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it already, it already.
I guess. And so that would remain and that would.
Okay.
Okay.
The open space, the perfect open space, but you know, it's, it's, it's basically a trail. I don't know. Kind of deserve, it's a corner. Well, if that property is a property.
Right.
So kind of the zoning kind of, I would say that they vote a lot. There'll be the trailer and trails. Um, but definitely you look at the two, that's things for the two, one is lower impact than the other. And so it's one of the, well, the plan as we develop. Specify, uh, you know, conservation for, for.
This is, we, I, I would assume we would encourage people to stay on the trail and, and such. So, yeah.
So, yeah, so it'll be, you know, so the South Hills Conservation Area starts.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. That's good.
And there's, you know, there's already an existing trail that basically connects to our process. And to when it stays.
And so while I have still talking, uh, so what we would do then is basically, uh, approve this to go on to zoning is the next step then?
This basically allows, you know, administrative staff to proceed with initiating the zoning change procedure, which then, uh, requires a zoning public area. Which notices go out, that will be posted to a public area. We'll say, oh, the zoning hearing, uh, such and such day, oh, basically council, uh, such and such day. So any commission then reviews it, reviews the material staff, uh, uh, listens to any other comments and then they make the recommendation and then ultimately council will, um, make the decision.
Okay.
To amend the zoning. Yeah, and, and from talking with staff, this is not time sensitive. So we have some possibilities when it goes to zoning, it doesn't need to be rushed through. So if there's some public input that we want to gather, you know, as part of that feed in, but I would like to see this acted on before the end of the fiscal year, just because then just, you know, for time, it's like, I think it makes sense. It's what kind of projects for the future. Yeah, I had an idea of possibly, you know, if, if council is ready to move forward and initiate the zoning change, I had the idea of having the zoning, uh, uh, zoning hearing May twenty fourth. And then the, the, uh, council hearing have potential action on June sixth.
Because it's a sixty day, isn't it? It has to be like out in the public for a certain amount of time.
No, just guys, you, you're voting against the, the with the owners of the property, initiate the.
But zoning has to, has to be public, like posted for a certain amount of.
It has to be, it.
There's, there's those, for those, for those few days that have to be posted before the permission. We're trying those.
Yeah, let's say like someone came in to initiate their, on a private property, yeah, there is a clock built in. That zoning has to, uh, hearing with forty five days of that admission, that, that's maybe what you're thinking. That, that doesn't apply to the city.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to begin the process of rezoning sixty one oh seven Brody Lane from single-family residential to park and thirty seven Lone Oak from single-family residential to conservation.
Is there a second? That's right, Premier President Johnson. Come set, opens up for discussion.
Want to remind everybody, this is not the first time that thirty seven Lone Oak has gone before zoning. It went to zoning and it was voted down to change its zoning. And then it came to council and it was voted down to change the zone, just to give you some history.
Further discussion. All those good favors say aye.
Aye.
All those good names. Motion passes. So council, uh, you have four decisions. I appreciate it. Uh, staff work nights, they're horrible, that'll be very mature. All the, there's a, aye.
Aye.
We are turned at eight thirty six.
That's noisy. I need a, need a soft, uh, little thing for that.